You're muted, Jude.
I'm not.
Oh, no, I can hear her.
Yeah, I'm gonna mute myself.
There's Mr. Chair.
Hi, Peter.
Hello.
This is the chair.
Okay, everybody, it is 6:30. And I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for August 18th, 2022, held via Zoom. And we do have a quorum, I believe, one, two, three. Two is there, Connor's there. Okay, so we have a quorum.
Hello.
Hi, Connor.
Hey there, Peter.
Okay, so the minutes for August 4th, like to make a motion to approve the minutes for August 4th, if we all agree. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, do you have any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
Not.
Okay. Under communications and announcements, I'd like to make one announcement. Actually, it's a, it's a correction. Uh, when we were reviewing the Calamar Lane case in the Calamar Lane, and I had mentioned going to the ZBA, I was thinking, of course, about the waterfall way, which is in the Hamlet, residential and required that. But the end of Calamar Lane is Hamlet Commercial. Um, so it doesn't require the 100-foot buffer that hotels, motels require. So I'm sorry for the confusion. Because I misunderstood, I really thought it was Hamlet Presidential. So, under emails, we have from a coffer and lies regarding the Calamar Lane. We have an email from S. Goldman regarding Calamar Lane. Two emails from J. Bishop, GLT, and Conlon regarding the Lineman Institute. We have an email from L. Young regarding the weekend music that he heard. We don't know where it came from. Uh, we have a letter from Mr. Ornstein regarding his project on Calamar Lane. We have a request for a submission of emails from the State Historical Preservation for FAM8. We have an email from H. Harris regarding the Calamar Lane, which I just addressed. He's quite right, it is Hamlet Commercial. We have an email from P. Solzer, which is from the Lineman Institute, and a letter from G. and L. Lammerach regarding the Lineman Institute. We have response from D. Looking, and regarding the emails from Bishop and GLT regarding the Lineman Institute. And we have an email from Fisher, which is a draft ordinance regarding the Andrew Campanelli with the cell tower issue. So, under new business, we have a scheduled public hearing. And then we have a discussion later on the Housing Oversight Task Force proposed zoning revisions. So, 6:35, we have a public hearing for the Lineman Institute of the Northeast Inc. Special Use Permit 22-0666. This is a public hearing for a use permit application to operate a profit school with dorms located in the R8 zoning district at 1700 South Hill Road in Woodstock. And the representative is Donald himself. I just first, before I open the public hearing, just want to, so the board understands we did have a public hearing before, which we approved the use of the Lineman's Institute. This is for the use permit application to operate and with the dorms. So I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, um, Donald, would you please tell the public what it is that you wish to do?
I'm in training school. Um, we were, we were in Sardis, and then obviously the Zena Elementary School was for sale. Um, we purchased the school, we're, we're trying to set up operation and move all of our operations here. Um, we currently own multiple multifamily houses in Sardis. Um, so with now moving to Woodstock, we figured with the, you know, declared housing emergencies, um, instead of purchasing multiple family houses in Woodstock, or the other option is to build on property, which is a permitted use. We figured we had, you know, we had the space here and we're looking to put dorms upstairs. Kind of the alternative.
Okay. I, along with the rest of the board, have read the letters in favor of your operation. It is very much needed. Also, we read your dormitory rules to prevent any issues. Um, so at this point, I'll open this to public comment. So if there's members of the public out there that would like to address Donald or the board regarding this proposal.
Do we raise a hand on Zoom?
Okay.
I see Laura Ricciop.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I'm really here for the housing part of the meeting, but as, as long as I heard this, just curious how many dormitory buildings and how many units? I think it sounds great, so I don't have any issue with it. Just curious if anybody asks how many dormitory buildings and how many rooms within those.
Um, at this point, we're in a very preliminary stage of designing, but it would, any dorms would be on the second floor of the main building.
Oh, so you wouldn't be adding structures, you'd be using the current structure?
No, if we're, if we're, if we're allowed to use the school, we're gonna, we're building no other outbuildings.
Yeah, cool, very nice. Thank you.
Very nice. Any other members from the public have questions to this? Okay, uh, Melissa, do you have any phone calls or letters?
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, ladies are raising their hands.
Yeah, we have a few people, hang on.
Okay.
Do you have something? Don?
Me? No.
Okay.
No. Ladies identified as true did raise her hand.
Yes, they want to speak, and so does Joe. So we have, we have two people that I know that would like to speak. So I'm gonna go Joe first, and then we'll do Trudy and Jenny.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, Joe Greco from Overlook Building in support for the Lineman School. I truly believe it is an asset to the community and our children, and hopefully our children's children. The building itself, it's not a non-conforming structure. It's, it's a shuttered elementary school. It's to code. I truly believe, so does the community. If there was an in-person meeting, I would have hacked the, the, the hall. It's truly, we believe, an asset and in addition to our local community and for the region. The closest other one for something, a trade school like such as itself, it's in Nebraska, then it's Georgia. This is a terrific vocational with an automatic absolute job placement. Again, for not only our generations now, but in generations to come, we welcome it, and whatever we need to do to help push this through, we, we would like to stand behind it completely. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe. Trudy, you've unmuted yourself, but then you guys can talk. Trudy and Jenny are who wrote in, and Don had answered. Um, so the, most of their questions were answered, but they can have. You have to unmute.
Judy, go ahead.
She's not, she's not unmuted. You might be able to unmute her.
Now, now, I'm, I think that you can hear me now.
Yeah.
Uh, Jenny and I, first of all, would like to thank Don for his reply letter. It made us feel more secure and safe about what was happening. Basically, our main concern is our peace and quiet and being good neighbors and having good neighbors. The unpredictability of different groups of teenagers, which I used to be one once, is, is a little alarming. And, uh, so, but we saw some of the rules. We're, we're always, uh, we're also curious about if, we thought about this later, with the tone of what's happening nowadays, if firearms are allowed with the students. I know state laws, but I, I, I don't know if cities can overrule that or not, but that was a concern. So, um, with good communication, um, we see this as inevitable, but we, we really want to be heard as far as the groups and how close they come to us. And Don had said he would put up some no trespassing signs, which would be great. Perhaps they could have a spot on the river where, on the Creek, South Hill Creek, where the school board is bordering that area that is not where we are. Uh, if indeed they need to have a place to go down to the creek. We did have some alarming things happen at the creek with a front-end loader from the school being brought down and rocks being removed. And so it's, but we also know that if there's good communication and people are cooperating, that these things can happen. So hopefully, hopefully, we're making ourselves clear and, and hopefully, a good line of communication with Don can continue. And, um, that's about it. Anything you're thinking about, Jenny?
No, I think Trudy's right about our own peace and quiet, because that's why we moved here. And we wrote a long note to, to Don about what happened after they started doing the lineman thing and, and all of that. And so we just want to make sure that everybody understands that there's, it's not, we don't want any noise and ruckus and, and teenage stuff kind of thing.
We were, we were surprised when cows arrived.
Yes, we were.
And, I mean, they're right across from us, we're very, very close. Uh, I'm from the Midwest, I have nothing, I, I love cattle. If it was pigs, I would be up in arms. So, I don't know if anybody's ever lived in pig farm.
But they're prime.
Yeah. I, I'm just, it's a joke.
I hear you, I hear you. Anyway, there have been a few little surprises with front-end loaders in the creek, and all of a sudden, there's cattle on the property. And so, again, uh, good communication and, and consideration and no trespassing signs and perhaps an area for them to have at the creek that's away from where we are or other residents where their land borders. We know we don't own the creek, but we also know we're entitled to peace and quiet and good neighbors.
Well, thank you. Not only, not only, not only approval with a, with a, a list of items that need to be addressed, right? Uh, I'm pretty sure Donald and Nancy would, and myself, we would like a copy of course, the minutes, because the integrity of our community is more important than anything. And I truly believe in it. And a lot of people aren't what they say they are that come up here, but these folks are from Sardis. It's not, it's not, they're neighbors to us, but, and they're coming in. So, uh, everything that is not in writing in black and white with the minutes and with approval, uh, we would like to appease the community just with all the smaller items that could be potentially not listed, but still may be an issue just for the community and for the success and for everyone to have synergy.
Yeah, let's create.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I see that the communication's the big part. I mean, I, I currently have two family houses literally in the middle of the village of Sardis. Neighbors everywhere. We, we do have occasional issues. The neighbors have phone numbers to call instantly if there's a problem when there shouldn't be a problem. Right, so, and, and like I said in my letter, there will be, there will be no students allowed down at the creek. Right, no part of the creek will students, that basically, if you look at the grassed-in area, that's their boundaries.
Okay.
If I don't have grass under my feet, then I'm someplace I'm not supposed to be. And, and, and I deal with the multiple teenagers every four months. I can relate to the teenager thing. It's literally like having a whole bunch of kids come back into the house, retrain them our way.
Exactly.
Right, sometimes it takes a little while. Like I said, we have weekly inspections on in the dorms. We're actually gonna have like an RA, just like in colleges, for one of the students, which we decide, you know, through the application process, is gonna be in charge of what's going on here. Right, like if I live next door, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to listen to stuff that's outside normalcy anyhow. Myself.
Everyone rests assured, it's not gonna be freshman dorms. It's not gonna be the quad with freshman dorms by, by any means. I, I've done so much research and I've worked with Don and Nancy for the last few months, just identifying to see if it worked for the community myself, on top of what it brings to the area. It, it is, there's nothing I can identify except policing the students that have to pay to be there. It's not, it's not cheap, it's not free. So, again, the communication's gonna be everything, but I think we are in a great shape. Folks, I'm gonna mute myself. Thank you for listening to me again, it's Joe Greco from Overlook Building, and I, I wish, I wish, um, Don and Nancy the best of luck with this.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Stuart has his hand up.
Yeah, uh, Don, what is Joe Greco's connection to this project?
Don, you're muted.
Um, Joe, Joe is one of the builders that we talked to about helping us complete the project when it's done.
Okay.
We have, you know, we've, we've pumped a lot of money into this building already, about a half a million dollars. Um, and we're, you know, we're, we're not even close to scratching the surface.
Oops, thank you.
Anyone else, Melissa?
I don't see anyone. If there is anyone else out there that would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Okay, I see none, and you said there were no phone calls or letters other than?
Don answered, we, we got two really positive, um, that everyone had seen, and, and Trudy and Jenny's concerns, Don directly answered them. He answered the firearms question within minutes of receiving that email also. So, no.
Okay, um, any other members of the board have questions for Don? Hearing that?
Peter?
Yes, yes, Stuart.
Yeah, one, one other item, I was gonna bring it up later, but I'd like to get Don's take on it. Don, do you have any problem if the planning board makes it a condition of an approved permit that quiet hours be maintained as you described in your house rules? That is, uh, from 9:00 PM till 6:00 AM?
Um, a requirement as far as, I don't, I don't, I don't know what you mean.
No, it's a condition of the permit.
Well, nobody else has a condition of a permit, right?
No, that's not true. Every permit, every permit is issued with conditions, and sometimes they're specific to the business.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I.
Let me, let me bridge the gap. Don, every resolution is written particular to a case. What, what Stuart's asking, I just don't, he, sometime, say, say we have a music venue or a logging, say we have a logging situation, we ask that work's not done after 9:00 PM through 6:00 AM. So that's basically what Stuart's asking is if, if we add it in the resolution, there's a condition to the special use permit that your noise level operation won't happen between 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Okay, I could agree with that. Yes, I could agree with that.
They will not request, would be requesting a cabaret at all, by any means. These kids, they got up very early to operate in this school. This is a, this is a real, I have, folks, you should go see these kids go to work.
We understand that, sir, and, uh, my only concern is that, you know, there are neighbors that have legitimate concern with maintaining their quietude. And once the permit's issued, you know, I'm not sure what our leverage is if, if noise starts to become a problem. So that's why I want a condition of the permit.
Yes, sir. Understood completely for the community.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that one instance is gonna be a problem, and I, I trust on, uh, in yourself that you're gonna police that, because it's an important factor for the, for the neighbors.
Yeah, and, and that'll be taken care of whether it's put in there or not, so I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Trudy.
Yes?
Yes. So I think what you're talking to about is kind of an amendment to the permit, the.
No, there's no amendment, it's a condition of our approval.
Okay.
I just wanted to get the applicant's, uh, re, reaction to whether that would be, that, that would be an issue for him. And he's indicated that it's not, so.
Okay.
I'm satisfied.
We would, we would love it if it was also specified about the, the South Hill Creek and not a hangout area. I don't know, I don't know how Don feels about that, but, um.
That's kinda, but that's regulated by the building department.
Oh. So this is not the planning board's question, you're saying, yeah?
Okay, uh, if there's no one else, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Don, I'll be in touch next week.
Great.
Oh, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All a pleasure, have a wonderful evening, folks.
Take care, thanks, Tru and Jenny.
Okay, uh, our discussion of this evening is the Housing Oversight Task Force proposed zoning revisions. And we're having a meeting with Nan Saltz, the planner. So, uh, whoever wants to begin this discussion, please do so. If Judy wants to open it?
Well, okay. Um, I'm hoping everybody's had a good look at it. We certainly received a lot of input, and Deborah and I and Jeff have been collating all the comments from other sources, but we need input, we, speaking as a member of Housing Oversight Task Force, need members from us, speaking as a member of Planning Board. We're gonna have to, we, the Planning Board, are gonna have to implement this thing. So we need to understand it, and if we see problems with the way it is currently proposed, we are in the middle now, we, the Housing Oversight Task Force, of considering revisions based on what people have said to us. And that's the kind of thing, if, if the Planning Board members feel that there are ways in which this is not gonna work well, ways in which it's gonna introduce issues that we are not sure how we're gonna handle, ambiguities that if they came before it, we wouldn't be sure what it meant about that. Those are things we really would like to know now, so that the version that goes to the town board for hopeful ratification will be as good as it can possibly be. The two goals being the potential and include, and encouragement of more affordable housing and the protection of the environment.
Okay, Nan?
Yeah, hi, well, thank you, everybody, for having me, um, able to join you. And I wanted to, and thank Judy for the, that introduction.
But I just, I just want to add, Nan. Nan has been incredible to work with, from your Planning Board Administrator. She responds to my emails quickly, efficiently. We went back and forth with scheduling. So I want to hand you like red carpet and say, here's the planning board, and here's everyone else we have here to talk to you, but it has been a pleasure to schedule with you, and I look forward to this, okay?
Oh, well, thank you, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm glad to be working with the planning board, and you guys are, you know, in, in the end, you guys are the group where the rubber hits the road on these things. So this, your role as implementers of the zoning and the administrators of the zoning is, is really critical to making it work. So I'm really glad for the opportunity to, um, go over it with you tonight. And what I thought I would do was just take a, um, 15, 20 minutes to go through a few slides to give you, um, you know, kind of an overview, a kind of high-level overview of what's in the zoning. I, I don't know if you all have had a chance to read it yet or look through it, or maybe you skimmed through it, um, but haven't really had a chance yet to really study it. So I thought I would just introduce it. Um, if you'll indulge me for a few minutes, let me go through a few slides, and then we'll open it up to any kind of discussion or questions or answers that, that I might be able to give, or at least if you have questions and I can't, if I can't answer them right off the bat, I will certainly get right back to you with those answers.
Nan?
Yeah.
There are, there are also are a couple of people from the zoning, zoning.
Oh, right.
Board of Appeals, so.
Yes, I, I, thank you for reminding me that. So yes, I, I had known that they were gonna be here, and I don't know who's on which board, but I, I will, I will amend my rubber-hits-the-road statement to both groups are where the rubber hits the road, because you, you both are the, the, kind of the, 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 where it, it, it matters, and you all have to know and feel comfortable and feel confident about, um, how these things work. Um, your, your role is implementing the policy of the town. Um, you guys see the applicants and do the, the approvals. So we want to make sure that we have your input, um, because we want this to work, and we want this to be, um, a process that benefits the town and benefits the applicants that are coming before you. So let me go through this and give a little bit of background, and I'm just gonna share my screen. No. Okay, so hopefully, that is that up for everybody?
Yep.
Yes, okay, thanks. So I, I just want to go through, I don't want to spend like a ton of time, um, but just to kind of reiterate that the, the Housing Opportunities Task Force, was working for over a year now to develop, um, the draft that, that's before the community now. And they, it, they were kind of, their work was oriented to meeting a couple of goals. So, um, I just wanted to go over that. So they, first of all, the, uh, draft zoning needs to be and needed to be, and they operated that it needs to be consistent with the Town Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan as the kind of broad policy document of the town articulates what's important and what's, uh, what's the direction the town wants to go. So we were, throughout our discussions, spending time looking at the Comprehensive Plan and what it means and what you're trying to accomplish. We started off by wanting specifically to incorporate a big toolbox, because there is no magic bullet for housing. There's a wide variety of things that are needed to be done in order to truly address the affordable housing issues we have across the United States. Zoning is but one tool in that toolbox. But even within the zoning toolbox, there are lots of different things we can do within the regulatory framework. So the, the task force started off with, um, really, we looked at the full range of regulatory options to see which ones would best fit in Woodstock. So we wanted to, um, find, you know, kind of list of new and expanded tools to, um, to reach that achievable housing. Achievable is, um, you know, uh, housing that average workers, um, young families, individuals, seniors, people on limited income can afford to be in. But the last bullet here is also really important for the planning board and the ZBA. We wanted to make sure there's clarity in the definitions, clarity in how the language of the zoning is written, clarity so that everybody understands things. Because one of the bottom foundational tenets of zoning is that you have a much better outcome when everybody understands what the rules are, what the community's performance expectations are, and that if you write them clearly, um, then it will help the process be more efficient. So part of the work of the task force was not only to incorporate the tools for housing, but to help create and improve the zoning code itself. So it provides for an efficient and a predictable, um, outcome of the planning effort. So you'll see in the zoning draft, um, various places where some of your existing language was tweaked a little bit, or definitions were added, or language was added to make sure it was very clear. And we've already gotten some great comments from the community about places where. it could be improved. So we're looking for locations where we want to make sure the language says, if we mean A, it says A, so everybody knows that's what it means. So those were kind of the foundational principles of how the task force worked. But they had some, also some foundational principles that they felt, came up over and over again in the discussions. First one, coming, of course, from the Comprehensive Plan, is that housing opportunities must also meet a variety of other goals that Woodstock has, one of them being environmental protection, another one being to maintain the community character, that we have, we have development that's done responsibly, that's done to maintain the kind of environment that, the built environment and the unbuilt environment that makes Woodstock such a unique and wonderful place. So those were kind of underlying all of the discussions of the task force. The other foundational kind of principle was to establish performance criteria. What does that mean? It means that we want the zoning to be pretty explicit on what you, as a community, want to see happen. It's not vague language, like, you know, I go to lots of places, and the zoning says, develop a subdivision to preserve open space. Well, you know, that's like a great purpose, but how do you really do that? What does the Planning Board have to do in order to reach that purpose? So we wanted to make sure there were, were things for the Planning Board and the ZBA to hang their hat on and say, these are our performance standards. This is what we, as a community, expect. These are the rules we expect our new development to play by. And once those rules are known, and everyone can play by those rules, then the process of develop, going through the review process makes that a lot more predictable. And that's what we were hoping for. So this, the, the, we hope that we have improved the clarity and the certainty and the ability for the Planning Board to really understand and the ZBA to understand what the, what the rules are. So, one, just so that you know, over the last. Yes.
Can I interrupt you really quick? Stuart's had his hand up, and I'm just wondering if it has to do with right now. So Stuart, you want to speak?
You're muted.
Thanks, Nan.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So you mentioned one of the foundational principles is this idea of achievable housing, or that it would appeal to more of a spectrum of different income levels. But I looked through the documents, I didn't see that phrase achievable housing, you know, the phrase that you've used defined in the proposed code revisions. And I wonder if it needs to be more specifically defined so that as and when the law gets changed, you know, there won't be wide-open questions as to, well, what did, what did the town board mean by achievable housing?
Right.
And, and so I don't know if I'm taking up on, on your end prior to today, but something that struck me as I was reading through the materials.
All right, thank you for that. And I think, I'd have to go back and look through that. I think that a lot of the, that language was in the Woods, at the very, the very last definition in the draft is the Woodstock Opportunity House or Home. And I think the achievable housing is, is part of that. But I, I think that's a good point. I will look into that, and I agree that we should make sure that that, that is a term that we use, and if it's not in there, that was, that was amiss, and we should make sure that, that, that term is fully defined. So thank you. So anyway, I just wanted to also let everybody know the process that the task force went through. It was not just a year-plus of discussions of this great group of people who spent every other Tuesday morning talking about housing. But they went through a planning process that was really at the level of a comprehensive plan. It wasn't just, oh, how do we do housing, and let's look at our zoning. It was learning about what the toolbox of housing is. It was, we conducted a full audit of the current zoning, what was good about it, what was bad about it in relation to housing. We conducted interviews of housing experts. I don't know, we did eight of them or ten of them, I forget how many we did, but we talked to people in the field to get their perspectives on what the issues were, what the challenges are, and what their solutions could be. We asked, you know, we asked everybody questions, you know, what's going well, what's not going well, what can we fix? So we could, so the task force could learn as much about what the tools are, what the current zoning says, what are the options? And all of these things got put into this thing called a SWOT, which stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And that helps the task force understand, put all this huge amount of information together and understand what's going on, so that we can come up with reasonable solutions. Another part that may, we may not have advertised well enough, but our work on the task force also included a lot of environmental analysis. We looked at, we did a lot of geographic information system mapping, looking at natural features, and assessing building capacity in the town. And also going back to every other Tuesday morning, the task force members literally went line by line and discussed pretty much every word that is in that red-line document. So it had a lot of process that went into. And the one thing that I didn't add on here, which is members of the task force went to the various other committees in the, that are operating in the community to talk to them as well. So this is, I just wanted to put up a little map. This is just one example of some mapping that we did as part of our analysis. Where on the left side here, we did, we combined a lot of natural resource layers to kind of get a thematic picture of where you put environmental sensitivity over environmental sensitivity over environmental sensitivity. This kind of map shows us where the most sensitive locations are. The darker the color, the more environmental resources there are in that one spot. So you can see there's certainly a lot of dark spots that correspond to a variety of features like steep slopes, streams in wetlands and things like that. The flip side of that map is this map on the right, where all of these green areas are the areas that are less challenged with environmental features, that help us, give us an idea of where there are more potentially buildable locations in town. So I just wanted to bring these up to let folks know that we, we did a pretty extensive review of environmental resources to learn what's there and, and to make sure then we include in the zoning how to protect those. A couple of things just to go over, that what you're seeing in that draft is a red-line document. The, the things that are crossed off in red or underlined in red are the changes the task force are recommending. All the other text that you see on those pages is your existing zoning, not change. So when, when I know that there were some comments that came in about it's three hundred and thirty-three pages of zoning, that is because, if first of all, there's two laws in that one document, the subdivision law and the zoning law, were put together in one document, but they're really two laws. So it's not three hundred and thirty-three pages of zoning, it's the subdivision law and the zoning law, and it's got all the things that are crossed out and removed, and it's got all of the new things in it. So if you're interested in learning what those task forces actually recommending, is to pay attention to the things that are red-lined, crossed off or underlined. And I did want to reiterate is what is not in the zoning. There's a whole lot of other tools the community really must look into in order to address the housing that are not zoning-related. Their incentives, their tax programs, their housing trusts, their grants, their procedures of the building department. There's all sorts of things that support affordable and achievable housing that have nothing to do with zoning. So I did want to make sure everybody understood that our little slice of the pie here is just oriented to the zoning and the subdivision. So I've mentioned a couple times the desire to make sure the zoning is clear, efficient, and predictable. How do we do that? We've tried to make sure the review and approval procedures for housing-related things are clear, that there's a clear list of materials that need to be applied for, that we've integrated it adequately into your special use and your site plan review procedures, that you have the tools that you need as boards to understand an application and make a good decision at the end. We've done that by adding updated purpose statements, because the purpose statements are really a critical part of the zoning law and the subdivision law, because that is the, the, kind of the connection between the regulation and the purpose, the policies that your comprehensive plan established. So those purpose statements, read them over. Those should underline and pin down all of the decisions the Planning Board and the ZBA is making, because that's, you're not regulating for the sake of regulating. You're regulating to provide something for the community, and that is laid out in the purpose statement. So we've updated the purpose statements to incorporate the town, a direction for how the town sees itself in relationship to housing and how housing interacts with the environment and community character. We created a new chapter for housing that includes some new things, but it also includes some things that were moved from other sections of the zoning law. So you have a kind of one-stop shop of all things related to housing are in one chapter. So it's really more of an organizational kind of thing, all in one spot. So that really, we hope, is going to make it easier for everybody to find the things they want and understand what it is they have to do. We added a new process here. I should have written this out, though. It's MSPR, stands for Modified Site Plan Review, because we've created an opportunity for, we have always had the opportunity for multifamily houses, which are three or more. But we carved out a kind of a subcategory of multifamily that the task force thought was particularly well-suited to Woodstock. And that would be the three and the four-unit multifamily dwellings that could be a, a single-family-like building that offers an opportunity for rentals. And to promote and, in a way incentivize that kind of opportunity, housing opportunity, is a modified site plan review. It still goes through the Planning Board. It still has a review. It still has a public hearing component to it, but it's not the whole full-blown commercial kind of site plan that you would go through for some sort of commercial entity. We've added and updated definitions, and I guess we need to take a look at one more, make sure that's in there. And as I said, we clarified the language as we can. So those are some of the ways we have hoped to enhance the zoning and the subdivision laws to make it a positive experience in, for all. There were recommended changes made in the use table. These are the kind of housing opportunities that are specifically specified in the use table. Some of these you already have. You already have senior housing. You already allow the multifamily housing, which we've kind of pulled out this try and quadplex is a, a kind of a subcategory of multifamily. But we've also recognized that there are other things that you have in the community and that seem to be beneficial that relate to, to providing more opportunities for affordability. Tiny homes, clustered cottages, co-housing, and continuing care kind of housing facilities have been pulled out and articulated, so it's clear where they're allowed, how they're allowed, and so forth. You'll also see changes to the dimensions table. And I wanted to point out just a few things that are on that. I know that there's been a lot of discussion in the community and a lot of fear that there's going to be houses and all of these things everywhere. And I did want to point out that the Housing Task Force did not change the density for single-family homes. It's still the R3 and the R5 and the R8 districts with the same 3, 5, and 8 density. We, even for the 3 and 4-plex kind of dwellings, we kept the density the same. So it really, it, it doesn't change the density compared to what you have now. And you'll see, oops, sorry, you'll see in the dimensions table that it sets a trigger for certain things that could be approved by the Planning Board through your site plan review and your special use process. But when you hit a trigger, it's kind of like, okay, now we have to take even more of a close look at it. And that's where it kind of flips it from the site plan review and special use permit process through the Planning Board to this floating residential district, which is really an upgrade to what you have in your zoning now, the planned residential district you have in the zoning now. But what we've done is we've given it more, I don't want to say we boxed it in, in, in a negative sense, but we've given more criteria, more clarity in a, a specific, what do we expect in that area where a planned residential district is oftentimes a negotiation between the town board and the applicant. We wanted to kind of take that negotiation out and give more predictability for both the community and the applicant. So that's why we've used the floating residential district the way it's currently, and this is up for community discussion. That, that trigger is currently forty units when you have water and sewer. After forty, it goes to the floating residential district, where then the town board is involved to decide whether that's something they want to approve or not. If there is not a water and sewer, I'm sorry, with sixty units, I, let's see, now I've got this, my, oh, so sixty units with water and sewer and thirty or forty units, depending on what district you have as a maximum. So this first one is the trigger for what makes a floating residential district proposal. And then we have maximums. So you have maximums now. Your zoning already says how many multifamily dwelling units you can have. And that has been changed a little bit, but we're also not leaving it completely open for whatever. So even if someone had a huge parcel that could have hundreds of units on it, if it had no water and sewer, it still would only get forty. So it does, you know, we, we can, depending on the comments that we get, we can argue about whether these numbers are right. But I did want to try and reassure folks that we did think about density. We did talk about and try and come up with something that felt to be within the capacity. And also similar, the, these numbers were similar to looking at the RUBCO building and the density that they have. So the other thing that we've added in was that the maximum number of units per structure for multifamily. So we're really looking at for, not these big, huge apartment buildings, but we're looking for a development that would fit into the character of Woodstock.
Nan?
Yes.
That's Stuart Lippken again. I just have a question, because it's in sequence of where you are, so.
Okay.
If I can do this. I noticed in the, the major recommendations for your housing zoning initiatives, there's different types of recommendations. You have accessory dwelling units, and you have 3 and 4-plex houses, and then you also mentioned. And then you also mentioned the, uh, floating district. And I understand that, uh, you're addressing the physical characteristics and interaction with the environment. But is there any provision for any of these categories as to um, level of rent that can be charged? Um, or, you know, criteria along those lines by either the town board or the planning board? Because if we get it without any criteria, you know, we basically have to administer the code. And if the code is silent on what criteria we're supposed to follow, then how can we be, uh, confident that we're furthering the goals of, uh, enabling, you know, affordable housing and so on? So it's a general question, but, um, it is a concern.
No, I totally get it. I think that's an excellent question. And, um, that I think that we talked about that in one of our task force meetings. And I, I can give you a partial answer. And the other partial answer I'd like to look into on the developer's side a little more for you. On, on one side is that so when you, uh, when you have a, a provision in a zoning that orients the, the unit towards affordable housing or achievable housing, whatever we word we want to use. We use, we, they're, they're typically deed-restricted units. So there's actually a deed that, uh, that extends for 20, 30, 40 years. I think this had 50 years, that those units are deed-restricted um, for a certain group of people that meet those criteria of the average median income. So the, the issue is that how do you carry that through over the years? And so when, when someone buys a unit or rents a unit, how do we keep that? How do, how do the managers of those units? Um, especially the rental units? Because the, if the, any, any housing unit that was purchased, it would be in the deed. It is, is clearly in the deed.
Right.
If it's.
But from the, the planning board's perspective, um, let's say a developer comes in and whatever's in the deed, they still go ahead and they charge full market pricing. And so, but we've already approved it. So what happens then? And, and what is our role or what is the town board's role or can the thing be rescinded? You know, it, it, these are practical concerns that are, we're going to have to look at, seems to be.
And I, I don't disagree with that at all. And that's the part that what I would like to do is talk to the folks on the developer's side who do this all the time. I know I was just talking to Ken Carney, who, you know, he has always, you know, he was telling me they have 50, 60% of some of their units indeed restricted, um, units. And I would like to talk to him, um, from the developer's side, how that works and, and be able to give you a more full answer. Because I don't have the exact answer from a planning board's perspective on that yet. And I'd like to offer that to you, but I don't know what that is right now.
All right. Can I make a quick count comment? The question of affordability is all over the comments that we've gotten from a variety of different resources in town. It's definitely something we're trying to think our way through with NAM. I'm talking we being the, uh, the task force. It's a, it's a major issue and there's no question about it. There are people on the task force who think no developer will ever come here if they're required to do affordable housing. I hope that he's wrong.
No, I think, I think the, um, I think the, the, the stars kind of have to align to make it, um, an attractive place for an affordable housing developer to come in. So, but we're, but remember, we're not, a lot of these changes are not just for an affordable housing complex. It's everyday things. It's the ADUs. It's the 3 and 4-plex units that maybe some average person might say, well, I'm going to just put up one building with four units. Um, it's tiny houses. It's, it's the whole, we have to look at it as that the, our whole housing toolbox is very large. And so your question is absolutely right. Judy's point is absolutely right. We want to make sure that the things that we're saying need to be affordable are going to be affordable. But I also think we have to look at that we've tried to include a variety of housing types. Um, we've, and I'll talk about in a minute about, um, techniques to make, um, you know, hopefully have smaller lot sizes that would be more affordable and so forth. So I think we have to look at the question of affordability as a whole and not just from an affordable housing developer's perspective, which, you know, I, again, that, that's where the stars have to align with space, road, um, environment, um, infrastructure and so forth. So we've tried to promote a variety of opportunities for, for more affordable housing.
Right. Again, just let me, let me repeat the point that i- this is all, it was all good. But, um, unless there's, uh, a clear definition of what achievable or affordable, or whatever phrase you have, if, unless a clear definition is adopted somewhere that we can rely on, then, you know, who, we're just going to have an endless debate over what's affordable or not. We may have litigation and so on. It's something we want to avoid. So.
Right.
It really has to be pinned down.
Right. And, and I, I would, I would urge you to go back and look at the Woodstock Opportunity Home that's defined at the end of the definition section. And that, we may need to build on that, but I think that that includes some of what you're looking for.
Thank you.
So let me just go on. A few other things. Um, I wanted to describe also to you a little bit more, um, about the net acreage um, for the density calculation, which is not a new, um, technique. Um, but it's something that I recommended to the task force that we include because of the environmental perspective that you have in Woodstock that, that it's, we, we do need to be careful about density. And we, we don't want to overbuild. And so how do we prevent overbuilding? Well, one of the ways is to match the number of homes or units that can be put on a parcel with the capacity of that parcel. So the net acreage technique, basically, even if we did nothing else in your zoning law, by keeping in the net density, we have already by that technique alone lowered the development capacity or potentially lowered the development capacity because we're trying to match capacity with environmental conditions. So how do we do that? I just added in this quick example. So we have an 83-acre parcel here with a stream along the road, a stream along this border. And I just applied your, um, net, the, the net acreage that's in the, the draft, a 30-foot stream buffer. So you can see this thin blue line is a 30-foot stream buffer, a floodplain. So we've added in a mapped floodplain. We've added in lands that are greater than 25% slope. And you're left, you're, you calculate, you put all of those things together and it equals 27.7 acres of land. So you have an 83-acre, acre parcel. And instead of saying, um, well, let me just get my calculator out because I can't do math in my head. So let's just say this parcel was in, um, so 83 acres divided by five. Let's say it was in your R5 area. So you have, at five acres, you have, using the entire parcel, you have 16.6 or 17 dwellings could be put on that parcel. But using the net acreage, we subtract 27.7 acres of all of this constrained land. Doesn't mean that those lands can't necessarily be crossed or somehow included in the development, but from a density calculation, we subtract 27 acres. And so you have 55.3 acres of actual land to count towards your density that would result in 11 dwellings. So the net acreage is designed to first and foremost help the density on that individual parcel match what's actually there. So that's one of the techniques that relates to density that's in, in the draft. The other one is average lot size, which is already in your zoning. I think we just expanded it and strengthened it. And average lot size means that, um, indeed, we have it and that you can use it in R, R3, R5, and R8. And this is how it works. So it's, you have a piece of land. Let's say you're in R5. You have 20 acres. And so in R5, you get four lots. A minimum lot size would require each lot to be five acres. That's what a typical subdivision kind of thing would give you. The average lot size, on the other hand, you still have four lots that you can create. You are still keeping true to the R5 density, but you can average all of these lots together to create five. So you can actually create three smaller lots, provided that you can get water and septic on them, and one big, large estate lot. Same four lots, same 20 acres. Um, but you are now given flexibility to create one large estate lot and maybe three more affordable, smaller lots. So that was why that was expanded as a technique to get at, again, can I guarantee that these three lots are going to be, um, you know, affordable in, in, in? No, this technique doesn't do it. But it creates, first of all, from an environmental point of view, it creates a lot more flexibility to have a better, um, development, a better small minor subdivision that is fits in with your character with the hopes that we can create some opportunities for someone to buy a smaller amount of land. So that's how the, why the average lot size for a minor subdivision is included. And, and this is not really just for Woodstock housing. I can tell you, I make the recommendation of net acreage and average lot sizes for minor subdivisions in every rural community I go to. Because I think they're just really important, powerful tools to get away from cookie cutter suburban-style development that doesn't match well in rural communities. So, um, the other thing that is a major technique that is housing-related, but it's also rural and environmental, um, related is the requiring a conservation subdivision for a major subdivision. And I want to stress that, and I know there's a lot of confusion about it. A conservation subdivision is not associated at all with density. It's what's called density neutral. It's a siting process. It has nothing to do with density. So if you were in a zoning district that allowed you to have 20 houses on a subdivision, you would have the same 20 houses in a conservation subdivision. It's a siting process. So if you look at this top picture here, this is, um, typically what you would see, what you would get in a major subdivision with uniform lot sizes. And you get, you know, a road, a loop road that comes in here with lots of driveways off. And every house has a big yard and a big piece of land. And this entire parcel is, potentially could be all-in long. The conservation subdivision, same number of houses, not necessarily a cluster, but they're laid out strategically to minimize the amount of road, maximize the amount of open space and protection of open space. And, um, the benefits are not just conservation, but community character where you can design these so it's less obtrusive on the, on the landscape. And we hope in the process that we have, again, some smaller lot opportunities that would be available for someone to purchase a smaller lot. Again, these are not techniques that guarantee affordability, um, but they provide more opportunities for, for affordability. Um, we talked a lot about in the, in the zoning, um, and, and today, uh, environmental standards. Um, I just wanted to, I, I'm not going to go through these, but just to let you know, um, the, the zoning includes building standards. It talks about citing of building envelopes to better place the, the house or the building on the site. Re, the use of screening and buffers, lighting, you know, out in your area, lighting is very important. Protection of poor forests, um, in stormwater and erosion control are all some of the environmental standards that are left. Um, some of these are drawing upon tools that you have in Ulster County already. The Community Design Manual for, that Ulster County Planning Board did has some excellent, um, dimensions and, or, or design standards in it. So those are, those are some components of the, um, of the draft zoning. Um, I did want to, um, I'm just getting to the end. I, I hope I'm not being too long-winded here. Um, we've received so far excellent commu- um, comments from the community. Um, and I just wanted to let you know, they kind of, um, categorized into these six categories. We've had, a- as, um, Stuart has mentioned, um, affordability. We want to make sure that what we're doing offers the most, um, affordable conditions as we can get. There were 14 comments or sets of comments that we've got to date uh, two talking about, um, concerns about the density and whether there's too much density. Um, I didn't really talk much about short-term rentals tonight, but, you know, cert- short-term rentals is something the task force has discussed and grappled with. I know there's been another committee that's made some recommendations for how to address short-term rental. And I would say that that is an important component of affordability, how's, uh, affordability? Because so many of our formerly long-term rental units are now short-term rentals. So that is something I strongly recommend the town to, um, address. We've tried to address it, uh, in the, the, uh, changes that we've recommended by limiting one short-term rental allowed per parcel. So that even if you have an ADU or more than, more than one ADU on it, um, we're limiting the short-term rental capacity to try and make sure that those, there's long-term rental availability. And I know the task force is working to try and see if there's some re-looking at the ADU that they've recommended and seeing whether they want to make any changes or tweaks to that. Um, we've had a lot of comments that have come in that are important, housing, um, tools, but they're not zoning-related. And those are things that we can pass along to the town board and say, here's a whole set of other things the town should consider doing, but they're not in the zoning, um, wheelhouse. Um, and then a lot of clarifications and wordsmithing, many, um, you know, excellent thoughtful comments about how we can, how we can make things even better. Um, and I'm al- always welcome, um, creative thinking on these things. Um, a- and sometimes, you know, the task force was so close working through all of these in that it's clear in our heads, but maybe it's not clear on the paper. So welcome, um, these kinds of clarifications. And I think the, the, um, task force will certainly be looking at all of those. Uh, this is a list of the comments that we've rece- we've received from, uh, already. And, um, we hope that there will be some comments from the ZBA and the planning board and others still to come as you get more familiar with the, uh, recommendations. Uh, and then the last slide is, uh, the, the task force is still very much looking for comments uh, that can be sent to the zoning updates at woodstocknewyork.org. Uh, the task force will be reviewing them all. I can attest that they are reading every single one. They are thinking about the implications of every single one and giving it all the comments is serious a thought as they have given this through the whole process. Um, at some point, I don't know when, but at some point, they will produce a revised version two. Uh, and that will be submitted to the town board for the town board's consideration. And then the town board will go through their process, which would include, um, you know, public hearing and public comment, environmental review through the secret process, um, planning board, county planning board. Um, planning board, county planning board review, planning board review. I think you, the planning board would have to formally um, provide an advisory opinion um, on the amendments. Uh, and then adoption is a low local law if they choose to adopt it. So I'm going to stop there and um, taking up a little more time than than I thought, but I think we've had good questions so far and open it up to any kinds of comments or questions you guys might have. If anybody hasn't. I know there was something that came through um.
John has his hands up, we see.
Yes. John, you're muted. You're muted.
Sorry.
No worries.
Um, okay. Congratulations to the whole group. This was needed. I have some major problems with your way in which you're pursuing this based upon the history in this town. The main issue I have is how do you get this past a public review process that's going to not beat it into the ground? When RUBCO came in many years ago to do the project that is there in Bradley Meadows, we thought it was a slam dunk. The amount of opposition to that went on for five and a half years to the point where if you have a conversation with any of the execs at RUBCO right now, and RUBCO, by the way, is one of the premier organizations in the entire state when it comes to doing these kind of projects. I don't, RUBCO will not come back. And you need RUBCO to make this work. How do you intend to get them back? How do you intend to get a major player back into this town?
Well, I I do recognize the issues that you went through with RUBCO. Um, and you know, the public, the public perception of things, I I don't know if I I can't judge on any individual parcel or or, you know, I don't know what the opposition will be. But I I can say that I think there's much more of an awareness now of the need for how for affordable housing. I think that there's the fact that you had RUBCO in here, even though it took a really long time. I think the fact that it's here and at least as an an observer, I didn't hear anybody have major complaints about RUBCO now, now that it's here and how it's functioning in your community. So I think you have a really good model of of um, how it, how it actually functions in a community. So I think there is public education that's needed. I think there is awareness um, that we need to build on not only the needs, but on the careful process that we've tried to build into this to allay people's fears. What are people afraid of? People are afraid of changes to their quality of life, changes to how they live on their properties. Um, that's a very scary thing for many people, and I understand that. And so I think that the task force has been very um, focused on what do we have to do to allow these things to happen and reassure landowners that it's in the right place, going to be the right character for Woodstock, going to protect the environment, not going to be overblown. I think all of those things are in there. We have screening, buffering, environmental conditions, you know, average lot sizes. Um, net acreage, all of those things hopefully will build confidence in it.
Nan, all of those things were in place when RUBCO walked in here twenty years ago. They were already in place. We had a couple of obstructionists who really were determined to stop that project. And unfortunately, we had a town board that wasn't as strong as it should have been as far as putting an end to that kind of obstruction. Though that project was well thought out, was on the right piece of land, had town water, had town sewer, which is one of the things that we were concerned about back then. All of those things were in place. And yet it took five and a half years to get it approved.
Um, to follow up on John's other point, uh, just a little history of before the planning board. Many years ago, we had a planning board member who presented the idea of whenever we did a subdivision, more than two lots, but not necessarily a major subdivision, but a good sized subdivision, that um, it it was divided into what the code said for, so it was five acre zoning, it was five year glass or seven acres zoning the same. But we required, the the idea was we would ask for one lot to be one acre for an affordable lot. And we floated that through several applications of people doing subdivisions. And there were no takers. They did not want to have a small lot in their major um, the, you know, McMansion subdivision. They didn't want it. Uh, I don't know if times have changed, but that was a problem we ran into. And I don't know how we can force it. I I love your idea of showing that the, you know, the four lots and a twenty acre subdivision and having three little ones and one big one. I love that idea, but we did try it, but with one small lot. And the developers just didn't like the idea.
They may not. I I I I don't know. I mean, my gut feeling is is that in many places, things have changed. Um, yeah, there's still, there's still developments that go on with the huge lots and the McMansions. And I I know that happens. Um, and you know, it's, I guess that the community, if you think it's a worthy um, a worthy technique, um, right now, it's the average lot sizes may be used. You know, which means that they could come in with it or without it as a technique. Uh, you know, if you made it that they shall, it shall be done that way or in some way, you know, word worded in a way that um, you don't want uniform lots in all, you know, all five acres. Um, then you, we have to explicitly say that. And then that is the way it is. That's the rule. That's how they will get developed. But I think that the, there's certainly a market out there for people who are looking for nice houses, but smaller lots. So uh, you know, I I can't guarantee that anyone, zoning never guarantees that that anything will happen that way. If if it creates the opportunity for it to happen that way. So no one might ever come to Woodstock and be a major subdivision and use the conservation subdivision technique. I I don't know. I mean, I don't think you've had a major subdivision in a while or or maybe just a few over the years. So the fact that it's in zone, the fact that these things are in zoning simply creates a policy and the opportunity for these things to happen. So I I I don't know, John, I wish I could give you um, you know, I I wish I could give you assurances that there won't ever be any community opposition over these things. I I can't say that. Um, but.
Not only can't say it, but it's impossible. It's Woodstock. It's simple. I have lived here over sixty years, and I have never seen a major issue that has come up that didn't have opposition. It's just having a reasonable response. And in the case of a reasonable response, you need, unfortunately, a government that's willing to put it in place. And this is what has not happened when it comes to projects like the RUBCO project. Now, several of the people on task force I worked with in the past in many other capacities. I retired from the New York State Division of of Community Development, Housing Community Development. My particular work unit there reviewed applications coming in. And we saw many applications and many RUBCO applications. They were highly thought of because they were so well done. Without them, we're done. This will never work without them. And to get them back in here is my concern, because I don't know if it's ever going to happen.
I have another question for Nan. Uh, the idea of making the small lots, you you know, in the five acres subdivision you pointed out, how do we avoid that from being called spot zoning? Because you're changing the zone.
Because you're not changing the zoning there. It's still the same density, it's still the same use. It's it, all you're doing is allowing flexibility on the sizes of the lots to be created. So you're really, it's it's not spot zoning, because spot zoning is when you take one parcel and change the zoning for that one parcel. We're not changing anything but allowing flexibility of lot sizes here. And um, and so, yeah, that definitely would not be um, I don't, that, I don't think that would be considered spot zoning, because you're not, you're writing it into your zoning law that you're giving people the opportunity for that kind of flexibility. And you're setting the density. The density still governs. If you are only allowed to have four houses based on the density, you still get four houses. Um, and you still have to meet water and septic requirements for the county. So um, I I don't, I I I really don't see how that would be considered spot zoning. You're not making special rules in creating a zone just for that one lot. It's incorporated into the whole, baked into the whole process.
Good point. Anybody else have questions for Nan? John has his hand up still.
Oh, well, I have other people, let's put it according to go ahead.
Judy was first, then Jude.
Well, I only wanted to say that from the point of view of working on this, I am hoping that everything is not going to depend on big developers. That making the the accessory dwelling unit rules much easier to understand and to do, because at the moment, doing the math to figure out what, how big it has to be and whether you could even do it is more than I'm able to do, and I'm pretty good at that kind of thing. People deciding to build a duplex or a tri- triplex or add an ADU, those are things that individuals who are not developers can decide to do. At the moment, that whole cultural potential is being distorted by this, the short term rental environment. And we're trying in the language that we're putting forward to limit that, and we may need to limit it more. But I think it's not only large organizations. Plus, you may be aware, the Woodstock Housing Alliance, which is a community land trust, has now been incorporated. Uh, Kirk is here, uh, Jeff is here, I'm here, and we're all involved in that. And hopefully, that's going to be another way to funnel grant money into doing affordable housing.
Yes, Jude?
Hi, I have a few comments, and it's probably good that I'm following you, Judy. Um, I guess, and and also Stuart, what you were saying about there is no guarantee that any of these units will be affordable. Just from what we've seen on the ZBA, but I wanted to say first, I don't understand why this is beginning with zoning. When you said there are so many other tools that you can use to create affordable housing, those in my mind should have come first, because you're putting the cart before the horse here. There, there is no guarantee that this is going to do anything except create more density in the town. And what we're seeing from just a layman's perspective is that there's a lot of money coming into Woodstock. And there's a lot of, um, there's a, there there are a lot of people who are not abiding by our laws. There are a lot of short term rentals. Um, so I see allowing two accessory dwelling units per property without increasing the density. If you want to say, uh, you're on a ten acre lot, you can have uh, two accessory dwelling units in a five acre zone, that might make more sense to me. But to say if I'm on a five acre parcel and I can now have what is essentially three houses on my property, you have drastically changed the density in this town. And I, you're you're changing things like traffic, noise, water, um, flooding, all of those things. It it is such a drastic change. And I just want to say also, just today, I heard of two people whose wells have gone dry. And I know that that's an issue in a lot of areas in town. When you said you did environmental reviews, did anybody study things like people's water and their accessibility? Because now if I have three houses on my property, I'm drawing a lot more water. And um, also, I feel like if you look at the real estate listings, you'll see a lot of houses in Woodstock that are less than fifteen hundred square feet. So now, all of a sudden, like I said, you've got three houses on your property with no guarantee that any of those are going to be affordable. I do think that, I know you find this difficult, but saying if you have a house, you can have an, you can have an accessory apartment that is eighty percent the size of your house, if it's a detached apartment, I don't think that math is that difficult. Um, we've had some people come to the ZBA, they're looking for other things, and they're not looking to create rental units. They're creating a second, a second vacation house on their property for family members. Or they're doing things like um, they're building a studio, they're building a garage, they're building an accessory apartment, they're building, you know, there's sort of, I think right now the law allows you to have ten accessory dwell, ten accessory uh, uses, buildings on your property. So we're seeing swimming pools, pool houses, um, uh, studios, guest cottages, accessory apartments. So when do we put the brakes on and say it's too dense for what we have? We are in sensitive environmental areas. A lot of us are in the mountains, and there's not a lot of water. Or we do have runoff. And then there are people who are in flood zones. I I just don't feel like this has been looked at. It's a very broad brush. There's just this big swath. Everybody in the town gets to have now three houses on their property. And I think for me, that's a big concern. In terms of your um, conservation developments and subdivisions, I think the planning board has a subdivision before it now. I'd be interested to see how that goes. That's one of the biggest ones the planning board has seen in years. I don't think it's, you're going to see a lot of that anymore. Um, and I do think the people who are coming in are not interested in creating affordable units. They want to make a killing. I mean, let's face it. And so this is why I think coming at the zoning end of it first is not going to guarantee any of that. I think you have to go at it from the other direction and figure out how you're going to incentivize people, how you're going to require things. But I also think just just saying, okay, we're going to allow everybody to do this is going to open it up for um, for more businesses to come. And we will not have neighborhoods anymore. We will have more LLCs, which I think at one point, I I I don't have the statistic in front of me, but we have almost twenty percent of the properties owned in Woodstock are now owned by LLCs. So we're going to see a lot more of that, because people are going to go, oh, we can go to Woodstock, we can create three houses on one property, and we can rent them for as much as we want. So that's my input.
I I thank you for that. I I can say that I know that the task force is, has heard those comments about the ADUs and and is discussing them. So I I think they, you know, I appreciate your comments about that. And I I I can attest that they they have heard them and they are giving that a consideration um, about what it means and what is the right way to go. So I can't offer you um, a solution right now, other than saying they are, they are definitely talking about the ADUs and the the relationship between ADUs and um, uh, short term rentals. And I I agree with you that short term rentals are a serious issue everywhere. They are a serious contributor to many of our housing issues that need to be addressed broad broadly, not just in Woodstock, but in in, you know, across the board. So I appreciate your comments, and I'm I'm sure that they, as over the weeks go on, the the task force will discuss them.
Nan, Gordon has his hand up there.
Can I just do one, one, can I just do one follow up? Has anybody consulted with the DEP and the watershed lands to see how they would feel about all those additional dwelling units? And the septics and sewage and all of that? Just a question.
Uh, Gordon had his hand up too, by the way.
Well, that's a good point, because the DEP has been buying a lot of land. Uh, I'm just gonna, uh, I I just want to go back to what John said, the political world of this town, it it's not. The political world of this town, it, it's not, you know, I'm smiling, but of course, you know, it's only funny in an absurd way. I had the affordable housing, I started the affordable housing task force in 2002 when I was on the town board, which begat the, which eventually begat the Bradley Meadows units. Um, I lost my seat on that board because I started that project, basically, in, in the short story. So that, you know, that there was, there was, and then the supervisor, they came in and there was a lot of stuff put on it. There were, there were things like, uh, we were, I think we were only collecting about $700 or $800 in taxes on that property from St. John at the time. And because this unit was coming in and it was part of a pilot program, we, it was put out there that we were going to lose tax money. You know, which is crazy because we were only getting $700 at the time. We were going to be getting tax money, but they were comparing it to if we had maybe a medical center. But nobody would have wanted to see that either. So there's a lot of scurrilous people, you know, it's a very smart town with some very savvy people. And they, they can get together and they can come up with a lot of stuff. And it's, and, uh, I know, I'm not just talking about the affordable housing. I helped put the cell tower in this town and the highway garage, and they were all huge battles. The neighbors come out en masse. So if anything is targeted in a particular area, you don't know what you're in for. This is, this is, this town is the toughest town. Probably it would be in the top 10 in this country, I would imagine. I would put it there easily. But that being said, uh, Jude said, and I'd like to point out, kind of reiterate a little bit what Jude said too, because the thing here that's happening, which happens in all zoning contracts, et cetera, et cetera, is layering. And we get ambiguous language is, is collected. And I noticed a couple of places, I haven't gone through, I mean, there would be 50 study hours for me to do, and I haven't been able to put that in on the, uh, the zone revisions. But I have read through it briefly, and I found a few things. Um, Jude mentioned guesthouse, you know, and that was even cited as not being part of the, uh, um, accessory apartment dwellings. But so we, you know, we, we allow for studios. This is Woodstock, you know, that's a big thing. So you can have a thousand-square-foot studio, but you can also have a thousand-square-foot guesthouse. But those were both put in before the accessory apartment law started, which I also spearheaded in about 2002. That was before the Bradley Meadow Plaza. We made, we legalized accessory apartments because they were all over town anyway. But we legalized it to bring them out in the light, inspect them. You know, there used to be the old saying, just don't put a stove until you get your C of O and then throw your stove in. Now, yeah, everybody knew that. And, um, so that's also what's happening, you know, with, uh, Airbnbs. We also have people that skirt the, uh, short-term rental by, they rent for two months, it's seasonal. And, uh, so we're meeting a lot of things. We, you can now have a thousand-square-foot studio, you can have a thousand-square-foot guesthouse. 800 now, you're proposing, I believe, a 1,500-square-foot ADU or two of them possibly. Um, right, two of them at 1,500 square foot, one would be in the house, one would be separate. You know, originally, when we did the accessory apartment, you had to have an existing garage that, or a building that had been up for two years. That since has been changed in the last 20 years. And then, of course, we have now Airbnb. So all this stuff gets layered. We have good intentions. My intention for the accessory apartment was very good intended, but and we, uh, even on my first, uh, a few months on the zoning board, uh, we approved the waterfall way in town because there really weren't a lot of places to stay. And then right after that, the Airbnb law came in, they just, it just took off. So, you know, we've had these things happen without realizing the consequences of, of change. And other things weren't tidied up. We, we now have a case before somebody has five cabins on a property. And they were just, you know, little artist shacks that people probably stayed in here and there. Well, they fixed them up to the nines now. They have kitchens in them and bathrooms and, and they come before us and they want us to, uh, they're asking for, uh, an interpretation. So they're renting them, seems like full, full-time. But now if we go into our interpretations, a camp would be cabins, tents, blah, blah, blah. Not, not trailers or anything, but cabins or tents or buildings, uh, for seasonal use. And we don't really have a definition seasonal. I don't know where that word is actually truly defined. Is that from, is that just the winter months? Is that at the, from the, from the vernal equinox to the, you know, whatever, the autumnal equinox to, to the vernal equinox? These things aren't defined. So we have somebody that's before us right now, we're having a little difficulty with it, and they're renting them out. So people are taking advantage. And right now, this, because, you know, it, this is, this town is in full-blown gentrification mode. I haven't seen too many towns that have been able to turn that back. You know, so that, that, you know, we, we don't live on an island, we're not Martha's Vineyard. We're, we're in Ulster County, we're on a large landmass, we're connected. So if you can't afford here, you, you buy an olive, or you go out to Acro, or you keep going. And that, that's kind of what it is. But I don't know how we change, because this is the desirable spot to be in Woodstock right now. That's the mindset, you know, you want to be in Woodstock. And, and with the cost of building now, $200 square foot is even in the rearview mirror. So if you're building a 1,500-square-foot building, you're, 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 you're spending $300,000 minimum to put up. And to make that, to see any profit on that in 10 to 15 years, you basically, well, I did some short, um, math on it, you got to rent that out for a couple thousand dollars a month. So that to me is, for a 1,500-square-foot apartment, $2,000 a month, that's not going to get a family in there. And, and 2,000 is expensive, you know, for a young family. So it's right at that threshold. Um, so these are just some observations, but I think the main point, and I don't want this to be lost, is, uh, you've got, you know, you've gone in and done some changes in the, in the zoning. What we really have to address, the guesthouse, the studio, the accessory apartments. Um, you know, there's a lot of cabins, we have a lot of stuff in there that people are taking advantage of. Because we have people coming in, we're seeing stuff on the ZBA that you just see maybe once a year, once every two years. They're coming in with plant, they're, they came in in a feeding frenzy, they bought tiny little houses, and they want to turn them into their dream house. So we're having, we're seeing things every month now that used to see once every two years. You know, because money, money, money likes to, uh, ask forgiveness if that, but not permission if they don't have to. So, you know, and, and that's where we're fighting. Fighting money is difficult. And, uh, I know it's, uh, it's not an easy job for, right now, we have, we, we've even cut our, we have one zoning officer now, we don't even have two like we had for a while. There's now the Ellen's left, we, Butch has got the whole thing going. And I'm not sure if the town's going to be hiring a new one or not, but that should certainly be addressed within the scope here, that we need, uh, something with more oversight. Because it's a lot, you know, there's just a lot of people taking advantage situation. Anyway, and I'm sorry I haven't written the task force, I did start a letter, but we have been talking, Jude, I have been talking a lot. I just haven't had the time to really write a letter that I, that I, I would want to put my name to it, but I started it. And, and I'll put some of this down in writing and try and get it to you. Next week I have a little more time, I just, uh, I, I, I work, so I don't have a lot of time, so.
I appreciate your thoughts, so those, you know, that I, I, uh, I hear you. And I, I think we, you know, certainly take a look at those things.
Can I just add one to that, Gordon, which is the definition of a barn? Because we had someone come for a barn that had a powder room. And I'm like, I don't know very many barns that have powder rooms. So clearly that building was being used for something other than a barn because there were already other buildings on that property used for other things. There was a guest cottage, there was a pool house, there was a, so we're just, you know, as you said, layering, and people are finding ways around to create more structures that I guarantee you are not meant to be affordable.
But we're getting a lot of villa-type areas. People are creating complexes, like Jude said, they're, you know, a pool house, a place for their family, a place for their friends. It's, you know, so, um.
Okay, um, anybody else, uh, on this? We do have a few other things to take care of. Let me just ask Judy what the, what you feel the next steps are going to be. Is, is, is this going to be, uh?
Well, we're, we're already compiling all the comments. And obviously Nan is busily taking notes. And the concerns that people have raised tonight have to go, they will go into the deliberations. And we will do what we can to make a revision, a, a new version that will deal with the kinds of issues that people have raised, to the extent that we can. Enforcement is a high one on our list that we don't have control of in writing a zoning document. But it's essential. If zoning is not enforced, zoning is meaningless. But we are definitely, we're already working on this, and we will continue to. And please, Gordon and Jude and Ken and other people, give us written comments.
I see Laura, and then I see Deb. So Laura?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I appreciate Jude and Gordon. I, I listened to everything that you said. I appreciate everything that you said about the worries and the challenges and the obstacles. I'd love to hear if you have any advice because the, the whole point of the Housing Oversight Task Force proposed law is to make housing more affordable. And if we don't increase density, how might you recommend we do it? I hear your concerns with what we've put forth, because I'm a member of the Housing Oversight Task Force. I'd love to hear your ideas for how we could have made it better.
I think, I think, I think what I said, Laura, was that I think the other pieces have to come first before you change the zoning law. If there are tax incentives that can be given, um, those kinds of things that can encourage people to create these, before you go ahead and change the law, which has no, um, necessarily, doesn't necessarily have any relationship to affordability. It has to come from the other way first.
I mean, this is, can, can you guys hear me? I can't see my eyes. So we, this sounds, and I know we have other things to do, but this is so much like what our last DRC or my last CRC meeting was like when we were going over this stuff. And I just, I'm just going to echo Jude again because that's what I find myself doing these days, which is that, yeah, we want guarantees or we, or the, the stated purpose of this whole initiative is to address a, a housing crisis and one that orbits affordability. But while we also need some sort of guiding principle or a program, you know, that the town can support that would allow us to target, you know, the right people and to, uh, not only create, but keep these places affordable. Now we're also saying we need a means of guaranteeing that this track that we're creating is going to actually create housing at all. And not like what Gordon and Jude said, which is pool houses and, and tennis courts and, and whatever else, you know? I mean, so, and, and I had said, the way I put it last time, and that I don't think you were there, so I'll just say, you know, like, I have dreams of someday building maybe a two-family spot in my little 3.75-acre place. I know that the reason I want to do it is to rent it to friends and people who live in, who want to live, I should say, in the area, who are part of the community. But that's the only thing that I can tell that would be motivating me to do that, you know? And I don't, and however this ends up running, it shouldn't be on my good intentions, you know, on my sense of duty to that. But that's all, that's all I wanted to add to this.
I, I just wanted to answer, uh, um, the question of about, you know, I, kind of reading between the lines of the problem, sometimes we find solutions, or at least we look at what we need, like Jude is saying, we need to fix some things before we try and do other things. Now, now, I mentioned that, you know, I did, we did, you know, I championed the Bradley Meadows thing, and we brought RUPCO in. And the thing that RUPCO said over and over again is, we need sewer and we need water to, to make this thing happen. We can't, because people came in, they go, why do that there? Why not just put a house over here and a house over there, and we'll do some this and that? They said, we can't make that affordable. And I think that's even worse today with the cost of, I mean, the cost of building is skyrocketing. I'm involved with several projects. Uh, my partner's building a house, I'm involved with contractor. I do, uh, fire losses for, for a living. I'm a public, a public adjuster. So we try and get people back in the houses for what the insurance company pays. And it's, it's the tight game right now. It's so hard. So, you know, to make things affordable, you do need, you need some, I mean, some of the things you're putting out, I think, are, are really innovative. But we also have a very, this is, you know, I mean, we have a mountain, we have roads, and we have rivers. That's what this whole town is made of. We're like a mountain valley town, so there's, there's streams and roads and mountains, you know? So we have, building on the mountain is never affordable, but it's very desirable for a lot of people. But, you know, you don't see the cheap homes up there, and that's why we had to do the, uh, scenic overlay to kind of protect ourselves up there because, you know, people want to just do whatever they want, and they still do. Um, so, you know, that, that's always been an issue. But to find, to find ways to making it affordable is difficult. Um, and do we really want to develop the hinterlands as, as, as much as? I, here's another example quickly. My road, I live on a private road, I have 17 houses on this road. Now, if each of us put an accessory apartment on, we have an item four, our road is made of item four. It's not a town road, it's a private road. We have to maintain it, we have a loose road agreement, but we do, and we pay for it. So now we double our, our density on this road and have 34 families on this road. This road's going to take a beating, and we don't get plowing from the town, we don't, you know? Um, so then there are a lot of private roads around in, in Woodstock, and they're not maintained by the town. So these changes can be done anywhere without taking some of this into consideration. It can be very onerous, um, it can be a problem for, for a lot of people that are living here. So, um, I think that's something also that should be looked at. But do I have an ultimate solution for, for this? No, but within those lines, there are some things that have to be considered. I think instead of big broad strokes like Jude is saying, because in, in the document, I see that these things were allowed in all the districts, you know? A lot of these things are being allowed in all the districts. And, uh, and there's some problems within those districts. Okay, that's enough for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I did see Deb had her hand up, she might want to talk.
Yeah, no, I, this is, so I just want to say that this is really, really good. I'm so glad that we're having this meeting. I'm so glad that you're expressing yourselves and enabling us to take this material in and evaluate everything that you're saying. There's nothing that's, no wasted words, nothing is, is too, you know, the, obviously, you're right, we can't solve all the problems with zoning. We're seeing many things that are outside that, uh, domain. But we're very interested in getting all your, uh, concerns and also your suggestions. So, you know, this is ultimately, uh, this is going to be a community approach. Um, and we're putting something forward, we're evaluating now the, the input we're getting. The zoning board of appeals and the planning board are key to, uh, to helping us to get the zoning piece right. And also to help us as we prepare our report, um, to the town when we put together our, our next version of this along with the other, uh, issues that have been raised and that we'll be able to, uh, you know, present something that I think could be a whole of government approach in the end. But that's going to require, I guess what I want to say is a long-time Woodstalker as well, John, not as long as you, but quite, quite a number of decades now. Um, I think we're all going to have to step forward and really support changes that's going to keep our community uh, from, um, you know, from losing its, its essence. And I feel from what I've heard tonight that there are really, um, good, uh, thoughtful ideas and concerns raised that can help us to achieve that if we consider that we're in this together. So, you know, we're a task force, we're doing some things. We're going to really try and focus on how to make what we've proposed make more sense, make it better. And it's not the only solution.
I just want to add one more quick thing, just because I've been a little all over the place the last few weeks, but I've actually had the opportunity to kind of catch up with a lot of people who I haven't seen since COVID kind of shoved me under the rock. And I just want to say, like, I know this is a little just quick point of focus, but it's easy to sometimes forget that this is affecting so many people in our town. So many people that we would consider children in this town. You know, I met someone just the other day who is 18, maybe 19 now, near years old. She's living out of her car. You know, she grew up in this town, you know? I know people who get so, you know, pushed out, they, they say they're going to move away, and they try, but they don't have the resources to even do that because this is essentially home base for them. And it's just, it's, I, I don't want, I'm not obviously going to name names or anything like that, but it's just really hard to see. And it's, and while I know that this has to be a careful, slow move. I know that this has to be a careful, slow moving and, you know, deliberative process. I just want us to all remember there are like some real people out there right now who are kind of caught in this purgatory that, and, and they, and I want us to remember who we're trying to serve here from this. That's all.
I'd like to make one comment if I might. A great deal of what we've heard tonight has to do with things that are not in zoning. And one of the things that's happening as we receive comments is that is also a list. The fact that we can't put it into our revision doesn't mean that it isn't going to go to the town board because it is. There's a lot of stuff that has to happen that can't be in zoning, but it has to happen. And we hope to do whatever we can to move those agendas forward to.
John?
In order to move those agendas forward, we need a town board that is fully supportive of both the ZBA and the planning board. And I don't see that right now. And that really concerns me. So since we have a board member here, that's why I'm making the comment so that you can take it back to the board and the supervisor. You know, we need support. The dances we have to do on the planning board, if we want to ask a planning board attorney a question regarding an issue that's before us are unnecessary. And they were only made necessary when the town board and the supervisor decided that they would wipe out our budget items and consolidate them and then tell us, oh, you just simply have to ask for approval. Well, it's another step. You put another step in the process. That budget was never overrun in all the years I've been involved in the boards. Never. And yet you chose to take it away from the planning board. I truly would love an explanation of why. And don't tell me it's because you wanted to consolidate it for mental efficiency.
Well, I, I can take that back to Supervisor McKenna and ask him to respond to you, John.
All right, I want to thank everybody.
Been waiting for about three years now for a response to that question.
I want to thank everybody for their participation in the task force for all the work they're putting into to look into the situation. And this is Gordon has pointed out, you know, there's, there's a lot of other things going on that not necessarily fit into the zoning issue. But we do have a few other things to clean up on our case here. So Melissa, are we ready to move on or does anybody else?
I, I just want to say thank you to the planning board. I want to say thank you to the ZBA for everything you all do. And remember Volunteers Day is day after tomorrow on Saturday and everybody who is a volunteer, which is, there's a couple of us that are, are paid by the town. So we can still go, but we pay for our lunch, but volunteers. I think it starts at three o'clock and fireworks at, at nine, but you all have earned your, your free lunch. But thank you for all you do and remember you're invited to Volunteers Day.
And come, come say hi. I, I'm going to be actually running sound for the music and announcements and stuff. I'll be, I'll be around if anyone wants to say hi.
Cool. Thank you. And thank you, Peter, for allowing us to come and, and take part in your meeting today. And listen, Housing Oversight Task Force appreciates hearing firsthand what's on people's minds.
Okay. Again, thank you all very much for so much effort.
I'll finalize you guys here. Thank you, ZBA. I appreciate everyone who reached out and I appreciate you coming in your comments. This is what we wanted. This is the conversation we wanted. Nan, it's, it's been a pleasure. I, I look forward to working with you further.
Yes, thank you, Nan. Thank you very much.
All right, no problem. Good night.
So Planning Board, we have some unfinished business. The first one is to make a motion regarding the Lyman Institute resolution. So we'd like to make a motion to approve the draft resolution.
I would like to ask for amendment to approve it with the, an additional condition recited that, that the quiet hours will be maintained from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Done. Done.
Okay. So could we get a motion to approve the draft resolution?
As amended.
Okay.
All in favor? All in favor?
I agree.
Okay. Now we, I'm going to skip one down. We have the, the thing Melissa says that she has two ideas for the John Lyons and we're memo for the CEO.
That was Mr. Chee Chee. That wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, good, good, good. Okay. The only other thing we have is the Calmar Lane application. You heard me this earlier in the meeting saying that it is in the Hamlet commercial. So it, it, it doesn't require the 100 foot buffers that it would if it was in the Hamlet residential. So I, I guess Melissa wants to know what, if we're ready to move on with it as is, or if there's any other objections to going forward with it. I know, I know we felt Judy mentioned that we felt a little slighted that it was originally going to be for long-term rentals and the guy was going to live there himself. And now all of a sudden it's a motel, but it is permitted in that district. So.
Are we getting any other neighbors on the point?
They're hanging around. They're hanging around and I've stressed that this is a process. The planning board needs to become okay with the application before the process has a public hearing.
Really?
You have to have a complete, yes, ready to vote that the application is complete before we have a public hearing.
Right. But that's still only a completeness. It doesn't mean we have a positive vote to approve it. We have to hear from the public.
Absolutely. But you need to go through the process and hear the application and tell them whether, what mitigations are happening. We have to get there.
Yeah.
It's not, we don't have a shot clock like with the cell tower.
Right.
They can write letters to you the whole time this is with you guys. My suggestions, I sent an email, my suggestions to put you guys at ease. Let's collect escrow and ask John Lyons for his opinion of the application with the law. That, but it's up to you guys. You have to tell me what you want me to do.
I'm remembering that we had a visit from the county that suggested that we had more power to look at neighborhood character and things like that than we were using.
Yeah, you know, it's funny because the mistake I made when we were reviewing it was Calmar Lane, I just, it does seem to me that it's, that it's commercial. I, I just thought it was a residential area. So I mean, it is interesting that you have the mix of commercial and residential in that section, but, and I, I.
I want to make another observation, Peter. One of the things that I think the town made a serious error about is when we looked at short-term rentals, we did not look at neighborhoods and I mapped it and I gave copies of the map to others, including Richard when he, and the S T, and the STR committee. And the observation I was trying to make is that it is all clustered. That almost all of the short-term rentals registered are very close to town or in town. The town is no longer a little, a living town. It is rental property for short-term rentals. It's a wall-to-wall hotel. And this is one more step in that direction. We're trying to worry about affordable housing. We're trying to walk, worry about long-term housing. And here again, we have another case where someone has presented to us what we thought was going to be rental housing, like not short-term, like not, not motel. Housing for people to live in Woodstock.
And Judy, that's why I think John, John's interpretation might be helpful. Don't lie.
Yeah. And, you know, it, it, I understood what they were saying that the difference between a motel and a short-term rental being that the short-term rental's accessory apartment or the home of somebody. But we do have in the code in short-term rentals that someone can have a five-bedroom house that they don't live in and they rent it out as a short-term rental. And I don't see the difference between that and a motel, really. I mean.
There is, there is none.
Anyway, that's why I agree with Melissa. If we all agree, maybe get John Lyons to.
I'm, I'm with you. I'd like to know what our discretion is.
Yes, me, me as well.
Stuart?
I'm okay with that.
John?
Great.
I will, I will get it. Don't you worry. I will, I'm going to have a conversation with John as soon as you have a little bit of time to give him some background on this and how you guys feel. And we'll go from there. Find out a monetary amount and I'm sure Brad will and Michael Arnsden will be willing for this.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. I, I know this is a tough one and I.
When Brad said a motel is a residential, I wanted to scream.
And why didn't you?
I pick up fish.
He's a little screaming.
All right, everybody. If we're good, I'll call for a motion.
Hold on. We're going Zoom. I sent you guys two quick emails. We're going Zoom through September. And I also, Connor, you're going to have to make yourself visible because it's not, it's not legal for you to be black screened. You have to sort of face.
All right. I'm in between laptops right now is part of my problem. I'll, I'll see what I can do.
You have to tell Brian that too. We're seeing his.
I know, but he's not here tonight, so I can't arrest him. I can only arrest him.
Melissa, okay. So one, one quick question?
Of course.
The wireless seminar that you're going to, that you wrote to us about in the emails, who's sponsoring that? Who's putting that on? Is it the, is it the industry putting it on or?
Kind of. It is the wireless forum. It's literally.
Is that a lobbying?
Associations.
It's a lobbying group. So bear that in mind when you're sitting there listening to their point of view.
Keep your hand on your wallet.
A hundred percent. I know. I just think it's good to have information. Kirsten Gillibrand, one of the speakers, that it's a whole lot and it's one day and I think.
No, okay.
I will report that I did what I did.
If you get materials, I'm sure you'll retain them and raise, spread them around.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah. What else, what else do you have to do?
What else would I do? Yeah, it's the New York State Wireless Association.
That's a lobbying group, sounds like.
Yeah.
How about, is there a planning board association? Maybe we should join up.
Call me.
Yeah, it's called the Association of Towns. And as I said, we used to, planning board used to go to it every year and get foot up in the Hilton Hotel in New York City with stipends to have our dinners that cost the town about five, six grand a year. And we gave that up so that, you know, we can make the budget work. So.
Yeah, we gave up a lot, Peter.
Well, but now that, now that the town is flush with money, maybe we can get it back.
Right.
Yeah, I like that they're, they talk about the telecom infrastructure. I don't know. It goes on and on. And I just think diversity inclusion in the wireless industry. Literally I will be in Saratoga from 7:00 AM on Friday after our meeting until probably 8:00 PM.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
I'm in.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Be well, everybody.
Have a good evening. Pray for rain, pray for rain, but not until I get my foundation poured. Otherwise pray for rain. All right, everybody.
Bye, guys.
Good night.